Hi, I'm Henrietta. Welcome to the show. There are nine candidates running for the East Palo Alto City Council. On this show, I'll be talking with five of them. Ravneel Chaudry, Mark Dinen, East Palo Alto City Council member Carlos Romero, Webster Lincoln, and Gail Wilkerson. I'll let them each introduce themselves in alphabetical order and tell us why they think they're the best candidate for the East Palo Alto City Council. Ravneel, let us start with you. Why do you think you're the best candidate for the East Palo Alto City Council?
Thank you for having us here tonight. As was mentioned before, my name is Ravneel Chaudry and I believe I would be a good candidate for the East Palo Alto City Council because I was born and raised in the community. I personally have seen the struggles that face our community when it comes to things like gentrification, access to resource, and a lack of support for the youth, especially in pursuing things like higher education. I am a, I recently graduated from UC Merced and I received a degree in psychology and I'm hoping to bring back what I have learned at UC Merced and bring it back to the community to help the next set of leaders. I have also was involved in student government at my time at UC Merced. I was a part of the Associate Students of UC Merced as well as the UC Student Association. And during my tenure in these roles, I did a lot of work on advocacy surrounding building more affordable housing, access to healthcare, as well as other concerns that are affecting students living at UC Merced. So I am hoping to bring back the skills I have attained in these positions so that I can give back to my community and further push for that support.
Ravneel, thank you. Mark Dinen, you're next in alphabetical order.
Thank you, Henrietta. My name's Mark Dinen. I'm, uh, my wife and I moved to East Palo Alto in 2009. I'm a small business owner. I run a small recruiting company. I'm also the parent of Mateo, my son, who's a freshman at Menlo Atherton High School. I bring a lot to the table. I'm currently the Chair of the Public Works and Transportation Commission. And in that role, I've been active in helping get the Bay Trail maintained. It includes getting garbage cans and dog coop stations installed and a new opening at Two Line Street in the Ville. Why am I the best? Well, there's three openings. I think we need people on council who bring a sense of how the world works in the business environment. We need people who can get things done. As a small business owner, you go out of business if you don't get things done. And we need people who have honesty and integrity and experience. And I have all of that and I'm eager to serve the community.
East Palo Alto City Council member Carlos Romero, you're next.
Can I understand just how much time folks have? Because I want to just, are you doing just two minutes or?
Don't worry about the time. Just say what it is that you think important to say.
Okay, all right. I'll be quick. Hi, I'm Carlos Romero. I'm a 42-year resident of East Palo Alto. Started working here actually when I was a freshman at Stanford. So have been involved in the kind of civic life of the city throughout most of that time. I'm a City Council member. I've been on City Council for 14 years, over which time we've, you know, probably in excess of $100 million, you know, brought in outside funds to the city, have developed over 450 units of housing, particular affordable housing, have approved over 650, 700 units actually, of market rate housing and also moved forward probably about 670, 680,000 square feet of commercial Class A office space and commercial space. I'm, I am an affordable housing and land use professional who used to run affordable housing development corporations. Now I'm doing that mostly as a consultant. And, you know, I think my proven leadership, my experience and my ability to kind of remain on task to make sure that the city, from an infrastructure as well as from a quality of life perspective continues to move forward. Certainly over the last 14 years that I've been on City Council, we've made a tremendous amount of headway on our streets, certainly acquiring parks, making those parks better, dealing with issues of lighting, consolidating the sanitary district, a 44-year-old project back into the city. So I think that consistency, that experience is what really, I think, allows me to stand above my, my fellow candidates. So they're all worthy.
Thank you. Webster Lincoln?
So why am I the best candidate?
Yes, why do you think you're the best candidate for the East Palo Alto City Council or one of the best three?
I think I'm one of the best three because I'm well-connected with the community. I'm in touch with a lot of the residents and I understand a lot of the challenges that our community is experiencing. My family has a long history in this community. They first moved to here in the 50s. My grandparents moved here in the 60s. You know, I went to Menlo Atherton High School, San Jose State, so I'm very familiar with the Bay Area. I had never really left. And yeah, I think, you know, just having the experience of working in this local economy, you know, biotechnology, you know, as well as I used to, previously I was at the Stanford Research Institute. I worked at Merck, Genentech, California Department of Public Health. So I have a very wide range of experiences, not only within East Palo Alto, but also within the broader economy. I'm an entrepreneur as well, so I know a lot about business and economics and economic development. And so I just have a broad range of skills and I have an analytical background, you know, as a data scientist. So I think I bring a broad range of skills and I can connect with a lot of different communities within East Palo Alto, given my background and experience.
Thank you. Gail Wilkerson, you're next. And why do you think that you should be elected to the East Palo Alto City Council?
You're muted.
I know, I realized that one of the things that you're muted. Well, I, I mean, I hate to brag. My mother taught me never to brag and it's getting kind of difficult to talk about myself, but I guess I have to in order to show the contrast to the citizens that have to vote. I've lived here all my life. I was born in San Francisco. My family was steered down here by the scrupulous real estate brokers and that's illegal. And so we came down here in 1955 and I've seen it in all different shapes, forms and passion. We lived in Menlo Park on Henderson and it was, at that time, East Palo Alto was one, one city. Our relatives and friends, it was no different. We crossed over Willa Road and you know, we were all unincorporated at that time. So I've seen a lot go on and happen here. Menlo Park gave us gutters and streets and took away the the sand, the quicksand where a lot of my friends perished. Facebook is there now. I know a lot of the history, my background. I, I started off at the VA hospital. My mother got me a job there. In fact, she got about 100 people jobs there from East Menlo Park in East Palo Alto. She's supervisor. And then I, I was going to Samhain, Junior College. Got there via Bob Hoover as a readiness program and I never stopped. And I was a perpetual student and I got a degree in business. And I didn't stop. I worked at the post office and I ended up there in HR, human resources. I worked every job in that post office, every last one of them. And even worked graveyard, middle yard and every kind of. And then I left there and I got my real estate broker's license. And that's one of the reasons why I think I'm the best because we have 2.5 square miles and no one before me, except for David Wood, didn't use it to his best. I'm the only one with a real estate background. I'm the only one that can actually govern and say that I know what I'm doing when I talk to a developer. And they have stomped all over, is that being negative when I say that? The council, because they know, you know, they don't know what they're doing. Look what Kramer just did. He backed up.
We can't go into those details, Gail, but I would like to thank you for giving as much of your background as you've given.
I have a grad degree in paralegal studies and people got to hear that.
Okay, well, thank you. And so I'd like to ask the rest of you. What do you think are the most pressing issues in East Palo Alto? And how do you think they should be solved? Now, I'm not going to call on anyone in particular, so you can answer if you're prepared for that particular question. Who would like to start? What are the most pressing issues and how do you think they should be solved?
You want me to go first?
No, we just heard from you. Thank you.
Like that.
Yeah, so I think some of the most pressing issues in East Palo Alto are really around housing and like quality of life issues, at least for a lot of residents that I've spoken with. You know, the cost of living is just, you know, makes it hard for a lot of people in East Palo Alto. That leads to things like overcrowding, parking issues. And that's also another issue too, is parking in East Palo Alto. East Palo Alto, parking here is like the wild, wild west, you know? And a lot of people can't park where they live, you know, especially when they get home from work. Or they deal with issues of just, you know, too many cars being on the road that probably belong to non-residents. They're just being parked here. So I think housing is an issue. We need more affordable housing for our residents who live here and work in the Bay Area. We need to address parking and I know that's, you know, one of the things that's coming up in the next few weeks. At least there's a session on that. I think those are the two most issues when I'm speaking with voters. Those are the two things that are usually brought up. So, yeah.
Ravneel?
I will say, I feel like the most pressing issue is a lack of affordable housing. And I feel like we need to focus on building more of these units, but I feel like we can also address the issues when it comes to housing and gentrification by supporting things like pilot measure, measure H, H, the pilot program and ensuring that we are creating opportunities and supporting our residents and obtaining the job skills that are coming into the community. We need to focus on getting them certification so that they can also get get the higher paying jobs to help offset the negatives of gentrification and rather than solely focusing on affordable housing, taking a two standard approach. Apart from that, I believe that it's important that we start addressing the pollution that was left behind by the ceramic recycling facility. Because as we're seeing, the groundwater is increasing, there's a potential risk of that groundwater reaching where that pollution is and that pollution seeping into our groundwater. So we need to work on lobbying both the state and federal level to ensure that we can get the funding to clean up all that pollution and ensure that we keep the water clean. We also need to work on improving infrastructure so that we can have clean drinking water. As I've been canvassing and speaking to voters, voters have expressed how they don't have access to clean drinking water and they're having to buy bottled water and things of that nature. So we need to improve infrastructure and improve the pipes that we have.
Ravneel, you certainly have a long list and thank you for those that you've given so far. Now, don't forget, I asked what you think the most pressing problems are, the most pressing issues, and how you think they should be solved. So who would like to go next?
I'm happy to take a step. Yeah, I think as people indicated, you know, housing is, we have a massive housing shortage in the Bay Area and in East Palo Alto. We haven't built nearly enough market rate housing and so the price of rent has gone up and up and up. When you talk to people, the rent has doubled and tripled in the last 10 years and that's a direct result of, you know, it's a supply and demand problem. There's very little supply and there's a tremendous amount of demand. I would add to the list and I can't disagree with the other issues people have brought up, but I think business development is a huge pressing issue in our community. Target Closing was a real blow for a lot of families who used it to buy everything from diapers to Pedialyte to cereal and food and all the home goods that you could get at Target. So a lack of business development. The fact that you have to leave East Palo Alto to do almost anything, commercial transactions, whether it's go to a bank or a restaurant or go grocery shopping, et cetera. And then, you know, Daco Parking, you know, council has not taken action on parking in the last, you know, whatever, I think. We started, our mobility study started in 2017 and it's 2024 and there hasn't been any substantive action on addressing parking and it's, it's a real heated issue in the community and nobody's happy with the current situation. I would say Parks and Rec is also an issue. We don't have a Parks and Rec department. I think we should bring that back and we should fund it properly. And there's a lot of other issues, animal services. There's emergency preparedness and there's also safe streets. When you go, like I was walking on Clark this weekend and one of the gentlemen I spoke with was really happy about the roundabouts getting installed on Pulgas Avenue, which we had brought up as part of Public Works and was wondering when they would get installed on Clark because he'd had five or six accidents in front of his house in the last year. So those are a few of the things that I see as hot buttons. But it definitely starts with housing, but I, you know, I don't think we're going to solve any of the housing issues overnight. It took a long time to get here. It's going to take a while to dig out of this fall.
Okay, so that leaves Gail and it also leaves Carlos, who'd like to go next.
Yeah, I guess I can, I can jump in. I'll start. You know, I think with the issue of housing affordability and displacement, there is no doubt, we can't build our way out of this situation. The fact of the matter is, we have an economy that essentially doesn't allow a certain sector of folks to live within a range in which they only can pay 30% of AMI. And so if we think we're going to build our way out of this solution, out of this problem, we're not looking at this thing economically. And I think many housing economists understand that issue. We really do have to think about how do we help tenants, low income, even homeowners. It's one of the reasons we're putting forward JJ and I hope everybody on this, this panel today supports JJ to try to address those issues of displacement, you know, high rents and, you know, the lack of affordability, which again, there is no silver bullet. And we need to try something of everything and this council has by approving again, probably some 700 units of market rate housing. City doesn't build market rate housing. It gets built by the economy. Our affordable housing, which is over 450 units that we have presently either built and/or are, is under construction. I believe we should at least be working on two more of those affordable housing developments over the next four years. The issue of streets and parking is clearly important. I've been out there knocking on thousands of doors when we were doing the work related to JJ to get it on as a ballot initiative. And yes, I've heard from folks on both sides that parking is an issue. But it's a question of when we have a parking permit program in which neighbors have to understand how it works and implement it and decide where we're going to implement it. But it's not a question of trying to remove people's livelihoods by saying they cannot park in places. We have to regulate it, but we do not want to affect and impact the livelihoods of people who live in East Palo Alto and we have to be kind of moderate in the way we approach that. The other issue I think is massive is our infrastructure needs, which at this point we have about $32 million worth of infrastructure work that is presently going on in East Palo Alto. While I've been on council, easily, we've moved about $75 to $90 million worth of infrastructure projects, not counting the housing work that we're doing. We understand that's important. I am the only candidate that has put forward the need to do a $90 to $110 million bond within the next two years that allows us to move forward in a significant way to address these issues from our own bootstraps. And yes, we will go ahead and we will find money from the outside, but we need to have that local money to make an impact on water, on sewer, particularly now that we own those sewers, on lighting and on our streets. I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gail? What are the most pressing issues and how do you think they should be solved?
Less chaotic than I see and that's why I'm running for council. They are so chaotic. I'm trying not to be negative, but it's the facts. Things that should be so simple to do, it's like, oh, our hair is on fire. The most pressing thing from, if you talk to the people, we don't have a supermarket. And I know Menlo Park is going to build one where they put their other two hotels along Bayfront. They're going to build a little community there. So the most, like Target left, Target left for a number of reasons. It's not the total lie that they were in there pilfering. I have witnessed it. And it's all levels from a lot of people, but the management wasn't competent enough. Nobody wanted to be in East Palo Alto. The purpose of Target was too small in the first place. So that's one. The next is the traffic and the parking. So simple. They can't seem to figure it out. They don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. And that makes them complicit in it when nothing gets done. You have to.
So Gail, Gail, how would you solve the traffic and the parking?
Oh, I think I said it the other day, close the streets off. We don't have any obligations for those Teslas to drive down Pulgas University Avenue, going by Willa Road and Bayfront. We end up with the dust from all of that, from 101. I went to the council meeting and I made a suggestion and they kind of like stuffed at me, except for Lopez. And then they looked at him and said, what are you doing? You're talking to the enemy. But I had a solution for the parking and I don't believe in it. I'm on the, the Public Works with Mark and Deborah. And you, you have to, they said, they make you go along to get along. But some of the things that are brought up with my education, what I have been trained in, I have to zip my lip.
Okay, thank you. So you all have pointed out housing, parking, pollution of groundwater, improving infrastructure and business development. So some of you have said one has to, the city has to strike a balance between economic development and offering services. What does that mean? And what is economic development as far as, as far as the five of you are concerned? Or the four of you? What does that mean? What's economic development for the city of East Palo Alto?
Is developing like the local economy, you know, to make sure that the revenues that we get from that economy can provide sufficient services for the residents. You know, without, I mean, when the city became a city, there was no tax base. You know, and that's one of the disputes why the people were against East Palo Alto becoming a city. You know, but nevertheless, economic development is ensuring that, you know, we do have a tax base to provide services for our community to address things like infrastructure, enforcement, parking, policing, all that stuff in, you know, one sort of package. And at what point do you, at what point is it sufficient, you know? And what point is it too much? At what point is it causing gentrification? You look at the Amazon building, the hotel, do those bring jobs for our residents here? You know, are those bringing in outside people that are going to push other people out? So you kind of have to balance the two from economic development and and providing services. And so that's kind of like the path that as council members that we should either follow or be concerned with.
Thank you, Webster. That's easy to say, economic development. But what does it mean and how, how do you develop the economy in East Palo Alto?
I'd say, can I talk? Me?
Sure, Gail. Why not?
Yeah, I'm here.
Not, not for long because we just heard you.
Okay, well, you can go to somebody else. I mean.
Okay.
Go, Gail.
No, Carlos.
Sure. So look, let's, let's not fool ourselves. Our ability to shape kind of the macroeconomy is pretty small, right? I mean, the local economic development is a three-legged stool. It's the businesses, kind of business development. The jobs that Ravneel spoke about, and actually that was one of, one of the key issues for him and I think that's important, right? It's training, making sure that our residents indeed can get some of those jobs. That's why we passed HH. That was when we understood that indeed we did not have that ability anymore because of the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies to actually impose some of the first source hiring agreements that we used to have, or at least make them as enforceable. We fell back on HH and actually we didn't fall back because it actually generates this money for housing and this money for job training, which I think Ravneel pointed out, which is very, very important for local residents who've been here for a long, long time, who've been struggling. And the third leg of that stool is housing, period. I think any urban economist you talk to, any urbanist you talk to, understand that without having those three working in conjunction, you basically have a city that's dysfunctional. One of the things that we're doing on the economic development phase is there are not a lot of places that are zoned in the city for commercial development. The RBD is. We are studying that and actually are about to approve in December a revised plan that allows for a multiplicity of uses at the same time requiring developers to provide community benefits to citizens like affordable and subsidized community space as well as business space, affordable housing, some park and rec facilities, as well as contributing to public facilities. So that is the area that we're going to ultimately have to develop in a way that's sustainable and that doesn't impact the city in a negative way, profiting developers and investors and putting burdens on the city of East Palo Alto. And that is why we have been struggling and finally have come up with, we think, a specific plan, a modified specific plan that meets some of the interests of developers, but does not cave to their demands.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Mark? Economic development, how do you bring it about without hurting the residents? How does it help the residents?
I disagree with everything Carlos just said. We have a terrible record of economic development. The city has failed. The RBD plan that he refers to is going to be burnt and torn up if anything's going to get built. Developers are, you know, like Bain University is a good example of that. That's the empty lot across from City Hall. Nothing will get built under the plan and this, the only people who have benefited from the RBD plan are the consultants who have gotten hundreds of thousands, if not as much as a million in fees while this thing has dragged on for years and years. Carlos doesn't like development. His technique for blocking it is to slow the development process, to extend the bureaucracy, to, to ask for more and more. And as a result, nothing gets built. That's why we have empty lots. We have broken promises. People have to leave the city to do almost anything, whether it's to visit a business, a bank, you know, spend, you know, they earn their money outside the city. They sleep in East Palo Alto. They spend their money outside the city. We need people on council who are going to get to us with these developers and bring in the businesses that the community needs. And we have businesses like Target Closing. We need to see businesses opening. Not only would these businesses bring jobs into the community, but they would bring the needed services and retail that we desperately need. You know, when I had lunch with Rose Jacob Gibson, you know, a year ago, when they were talking. you know, a year ago, when they were talking about the Ravenswood Shopping Center and knocking down all of Whiskey Gulch, taking out all of that small business space. The idea was not that we would never have small business development again, but that it would continue. And it has stopped for over twenty years.
Thank you, Mark. I'd love to, I'd love to let you go on, but I can't. Gail or Rovneef? I'm sorry, Rovneef.
I I I'm ready to go next.
Okay.
My approach to economic development in East Palo Alto centers centers on the belief that small businesses are the backbone of our community. To support, to support these vital enterprises, we need to streamline the permitting process, making it easier for entrepreneurs to navigate regulations and get started. I propose establishing a centralized resource hub where business owners can access information, training and support. This hub could offer workshops on business planning and financial management, helping entrepreneurs build sustainable ventures. Additionally, fostering partnerships with local organizations and educational institutions can provide access to funding and mentorship opportunities, creating a supportive ecosystem for innovation and growth. Inclusivity is also crucial. We must ensure that all community members, especially those from historically marginalized backgrounds, have equal access to resources. By empowering our small businesses, we can stimulate economic growth and enhance the overall quality of life in East Palo Alto.
Okay, Gail?
Okay, you know, I've been here a long time. I've lived it. And what I'm talking about, I lived it. I had two office spaces and I was displaced twice. Amazon took the first one. And then Whiskey Gulch. And we were promised that we would have a space to go back to. And I didn't get paid for that that second move because I moved, I was going through some legal things and I I left too early, they said. But we, Whiskey Gulch was bringing in taxes, no matter how sloppy they say the people's books were. They were bringing in taxes. And I agree with Mark. What Carlos says is it's a bunch of word salad. Okay, I'm not trying to be mean, but it gets garbly after a while. You 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 have to think when you make a deal with a developer like Millipark and all the rest of the cities do, they incorporate a community space for the citizens. And they don't, you know, know if and buts about it. And well, Sobrado has backed out of a lot of them and Palo Alto took them to port. And say, no, you're going to stick to what you you're, you said you were going to do. And also about that space, they call the Four Corners, they backed out. And they backed out because of the city council. And there's one particular council person, he always slashes the
So so Gail, what I'd like for all of you to do is talk about what you would do. Not what's wrong, but what would you do to fix what you say is wrong?
Okay, I will stop all the disinformation and the misinformation because they because you don't know how to do your job, don't blame it on somebody else. You, the bus stops here. And I have the background and the experience. I've dealt with developers. I developed, helped develop Buchanan Court over there. I worked on that. I know how to talk to them. I know their language. And the way I see it, I mean, I just cringe, the developers, they they're listening to the non-real estate people talk. They, you can see Mark, Mike Kramer is a spokesperson. They're going to
Let's not, let's not deal with particular people in terms of mentioning them.
Well, I was saying
So one more thing, Gail, and then we'll have to move on. I'd have to give Carlos a chance to respond if he'd like to respond.
Well, he needs to be. Okay, I have a real estate background. I know how to start it. I know how to stop it. I know how to
Okay.
To do it.
Thank you. Carlos, would you like to respond?
Yeah, just just quickly, I can do this in thirty seconds. I mean, I I completely disagree that we are an anti-development counselor, that I am an anti-development council member. Four hundred and fifty affordable housing development units that have actually either been put in the ground or that are funded and moving forward is not de minimis. Seven hundred units of market rate housing that has been approved by this council is not de minimis. That the market in and of itself has not allowed that to develop. That is another issue, Mr. Dynan. Number three, seven hundred and maybe twenty thousand square feet, seven hundred thousand square feet, something like that, of commercial space, office space with a ground floor commercial that has been approved by this council, three separate projects, clearly is not de minimis. So you cannot say that this is a council that is anti-development in any way, shape or form. It is the fiction that someone, in this case, I'll mention Mr. Dynan, seems to want to propagate with no factual basis. Thank you.
Can I respond, Henrietta? The empty lots speak for themselves. There are empty lots everywhere in town. We've seen Redwood City grow up in the last twenty years. We've seen things housing built, we've seen businesses flourish. East Palo Alto has stagnated and it's stagnated because we haven't had the right leadership. We've had leadership more interested in blocking things from happening than actually building things and seeing the the community flourish and bring in the businesses and the jobs and the housing that the community desperately needs. And no, we have not built enough housing.
I just enumerated two million square feet of development that has either been built or has been entitled. We do not build as a city.
On paper, nothing has is is they're not breaking ground. They've paused development.
That is not our fault, Mark.
City Council
That is not our fault. And if you're going to give away city money to incentivize
Okay, everyone.
It is your fault, Carlos.
Mark, thank you. We decided, we said that we weren't going to do any finger pointing. Okay? We would stick to exactly what your plan is and what your vision is and how you think you can bring it about. Now, I've heard about bringing in parks. I've heard about animal services. I've heard about other things that you would like to do in the city. However, the city is two point five square miles. Will you tell me where the additional parks will go and where the other additional facilities are going that you're talking about?
That's directed at me or
Well, Mark, we just heard from you.
The city has a park master plan. Right? That park master plan actually is well thought out. Now, whether some of the members who are running here have not read it and do not understand what we've got, what we've gotten funded. We are working with the school district. Certainly, we got an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from one of our congressmen to work collectively to redo a field. Right? We have added Cooley Landing. In addition to that, we are hardwiring the development of additional park space within the Ravenswood Business District. We have, we have included impact fees on all our developments that require developers to contribute to a pot of money. So indeed, there can be some parks. As a matter of fact, there is a small, we would call a pocket park that is included in the woodland park development. So clearly, there are, there are some linear parks that we're talking about doing once the second reach of the San Francisco, San Francisco Creek flood project is done. So all of those things knit together will create more park space within the city. It is planned for.
Webster, you are smiling. Any comments?
Well, I was just wanted to get back to the economic development aspects that we just covered because I kind of went first and I didn't have an opportunity to respond to that. But you know, like I said, the track record and you know, the fact is that we look at we have two, like Office Depot and has been gone for a long time. That building is sat and vacant for a number of years. Target just left. All of our entrepreneurs have no space in East Palo Alto. You drive around at night, you see many people cooking on street corners and then out of their driveways. Why is that? Are they permitted? I want to let people go through and do things the right way, but also provide people with opportunities. You know, so that's when it comes to addressing economic development, just go out right now, go drive around East Palo Alto. I guarantee you, someone is cooking.
Why? Can you tell us why people are cooking in their driveways?
Because there is no place for them other than their homes to to operate a business. And there's also, I mean,
Say cooking, are you talking about catering services?
I'm talking about a full-on restaurants.
A little bit, that's her, that's her wheelhouse, too. Can I say something about it?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, hold on. I'm sorry. Did you finish, Webster? Because I interrupted. I'm sorry.
I mean, that's pretty much it. I mean, we have a lot of business closures. You go to University Circle, there's a lot of empty office space. Amazon, I mean, they just started opening things up. We have two major retailers closed in East Palo Alto.
So I have a question for you. We did have a COVID pandemic which just turned everything upside down. So do you think some of the fact that places are empty and their closures might be the if, the fact that we're kind of recovering from COVID nineteen and people are still sheltering in place? No, new office buildings are
Yeah, the office buildings, I mean, that's that's happening throughout the peninsula, you know, in Palo Alto as well.
Yes. So it's not just an issue for East Palo Alto.
The retailers like Target leaving, we have to go to Mountain View or Redwood City to visit a Target.
Yeah, but drugstores now are closing down, are closing offices all over the country. I mean, there are more and more closures that one hears about every day.
Yeah, like Three Brothers. I think Three Brothers is closing too.
So this isn't just an issue for East Palo Alto.
East Palo Alto is a different economy than Palo Alto. You don't, in Palo Alto, there's, you go downtown, there's plenty of space available for entrepreneurs. East Palo Alto doesn't have the same thing.
And there are many businesses that have closed and there are a lot of open space that's not being rented.
You know, when you look at our Ravenswood one O one, Office Depot has been closed for how many years?
In the circuit city.
And 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 how many closures are there in Palo Alto? Which is far more affluent with all of the vacant office space. So could it be the economy and coming out of COVID that the recovery hasn't been?
Depot is closed before COVID.
Yes, that's true.
So it's been at least five years that place has sat and vacant.
Yes, but is that the effect, and I'm wondering for the rest of you to respond, of the economy in general in terms of business recovery and offices opening and businesses, new businesses developing with office space? I mean, there is, what, Amazon? That more brick and mortar businesses are going out of business because people are doing more things online.
Do you want a professional to tell you or you want to wait for one of the other non-real estate people?
Gail, if you have a solution, please.
I have a solution. When they first came to the council, when they were building, 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 one developer said, the people in East Palo Alto, they want office space. Now, you got people, janitors and everything, going outside and they didn't want office space. You could go all up and down one O one, vacant office space. Now, if the, if you're saying that the pandemic had something to do with it, it affected it. In fact, the the employers had to force people to go back to to brick and mortar and get out of their house. They were building ADUs and doing their work from home. My son, he was working for three employers. And that's what the employees want to do was to control it and bring people back into their brick and mortar so they can keep a watch on them. What what you want to know the solution of it is?
Yes.
Um, oh, God, it's it's multi-level a situation because one thing, it's like a domino effect and it affects the other. I see Amazon has made people come back into that building on in East Palo Alto, but they've closed off four seasons and it's an economical thing. And just like you said, they're closing off for profit, their bottom line, that's what a business is, bottom line. And so the Walgreens and the CVSs are closing all over. I heard they were going to close like twelve hundred stores.
So I have the question. Mark, for instance, you would like to bring drugstores into East Palo Alto with Walgreens and CVS and other pharmaceutical companies closing. What's going to attract drugstores in to East Palo Alto?
Well, we need to have development. I mean, Bain University would be a perfect place to have a mixed-use development with housing, retail and office space. And if there's going to be first floor retail, Walgreens or you know, something like that would be very useful. But I wanted to pivot back to your question about parks and we kind of went back to economic development and parks is something that I focus on, focused on. You know, the city of East Palo Alto, despite having a hundred and forty-five million dollars in the bank, does not have a Parks and Rec Department. And that's something we need to prioritize. And we've had two murders in our parks, one in Martin with the King Park and one in Jack Farrell in the last four years. And, you know, people don't feel like our parks are well managed, that they're, that they're not safe. We need to make major investments in our parks. You know, that includes, you know, forming a Parks and Rec Department. It means getting security cameras in the parks. It means investing in things like new new fields and field lighting so kids can practice after dark and really packing them full of activities so that people feel safe going to our parks. It also means, you know, making sure that like what would just happened in the Ravenswood Preserve, that we never again have a situation where a bike path is opened up but is blocked off to East Palo Alto residents. And that's something I spent about three, three years working on to get opened. And that should be opening sometime, you know, the two-lane opening to the Ravenswood Preserve from the bill should happen sometime in the next few months. But, you know, there's a lot we can do as a city, but we need council members that are going to be taking action, making things move forward and getting to yes on these decisions as opposed to looking for reasons to say no.
Thank you. Rovneef, we haven't heard from you for a while.
I'm sorry, the, my service had cut out, but I'm back in. But if you could just repeat the question, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Well, we were talking about businesses coming to East Palo Alto. And the fact that there might not be a lot of them is that a function of what's going on nationwide with brick and mortar businesses closing?
Got it. I'll just, I'll go back to you in just a second. Just need to formulate my thoughts. Sorry about that.
Okay.
You know, Henrietta, look, on that issue, there is a fundamental shift in the way retail places itself in communities, right? You know, definitely, you know, digital communications, the internet has changed significantly how we get our products. As a matter of fact, the county is making more money these days, and we actually benefit in that from outside sales because of the Wayfair decision that said that when you make an internet sale, the taxes are collected by the city that receives that sale. So in the in the play, in the in case of the county and the city of East Palo Alto, our sales taxes have been increased not because of brick and mortar sales, but because of those internet sales, right? And so we need to understand how we kind of repurpose and reuse some of this land. That is why when we developed our general plan, we allowed for multi-tiered, multi-level mixed use at the Ravenswood Business District because we understand that big box is indeed going the way of the dinosaur. I don't care who you are. You can look all over the country that there is a repurposing, whether you're Richard Florida, right? You know, a, you know, a famous urbanist. Everybody is recognizing that indeed the days of retail as we knew it before, and perhaps Mr. Dynan is stuck in the past, right? Are gone. And that we need to be much more nimble in small businesses, much more nimble in terms of the type of spaces that we actually allow. The big box spaces perhaps need to be converted into smaller spaces or and or even better converted into multiple uses. So, you know, last question, the last comment I'll make is people have been talking about some of the micro businesses that are out on the streets. Micro businesses are indeed the incubators, the future small business. Yes, one of the things that I have in my about fifteen-point plan of stuff that I need, that we need to do, and we're working on this, is indeed come up with a small business program that works with those small micro businesses, one to get them licensed, to make sure that they're in program so that they can grow and ultimately become, if they want to, and if the economy merits it, part of kind of that uh, part of kind of that small business environment, kind of ecosystem that many cities have, yet we understand that many of the brick and mortar stores that we used to have in the past will no longer be here, and that we're moving more to a service sector uh as as well as kind of, you know, more kind of restaurants that are serving rather than these larger stores that are, you know, meeting out products that most people now seem to be buying on the internet.
Thank you. Now, you all have talked about what the problems are, and some of the things, the emphasis hasn't been on what you would do specifically, which I'd like to hear. But what I'd like to ask you now is, there are all kinds of things you think should be done, and you have your ideas about it. But how are you going to convince your fellow council members, if you get on the council, to to enact or implement some of the ideas that you have? Since you're going to have to work with others, what are you going to do?
Um.
How are you?
Uh, I like to answer that question if I may. Um, so like I've met, as I mentioned before, I have served on student government at U C of Merced as well as the UC Student Association. And in my experience there, whenever we had a resolution that was very divisive or a lot of like other members of the Association had concerns about it, what I did, it was I would personally set up times to meet with them to understand what their concerns are. I feel like far too often, we get this mindset of, oh, I don't like this person, I don't like their politics, so I'm not going to talk to them. And what I really set for myself was that, instead of just saying, oh, here's my office hours, come meet with me, I came to people's doors, I met them where they were at, and I met with my peers to understand why they had concerns regarding my resolution, what they would succeed, what would they like to see changed, how they would like to improve it. So I feel like that's the most important part, is to have discussions, let go of any preconceived notions that we may have, and understand that aside from this petty arguments that we have with one another, we focus on the issues and focus on serving the community and be able to let go of our egos and egos and be humble with one another to have these discussions. Um, apart from that, I I would also work on working with community organizations so that they can come to the city council and kind of give their ins- uh insight and their experiences, so that they can help reemphasize the importance of re- various resolutions or policies, so that we can create a more well-run, rounded approach to these issues and ensure that we're getting the voices of our community and able to bring these perspectives to the rest of the council so that we can work together and be on the same page.
Thank you. Webster, what will you do specifically to work with your fellow sister council members if you get elected? To implement some of your ideas.
It's really just about uh being able to compromise and and to be able to listen and be able to uh evaluate ideas and um understand that, you know, we're all working, hopefully, we're all working towards um making East Palo Alto better for everyone, not just a certain segment, you know, but across different um racial and ethnic and socioeconomic lines, you know? Um, we all want uh the parking situation to be improved. We all want to have a grocery store in East Palo Alto. And when you talk about, you know, big box retailers being dead, you know, I mean Costco's thriving, maybe we can get a Costco in East Palo Alto, or a Safeway, or, I mean, we have IKEA, is that the only place where we can go to get food? You know, and that's.
Webster, we have a grocery store. It's a full-service grocery store. It's me pueblo. It's twenty-seven thousand square feet. I don't know why people say we don't have a grocery store.
We need a grocery store that accommodates everybody's needs in East Palo Alto.
So I. Go on, go on.
So nevertheless, um, you know, I to be able to, you just have to, we just have to get on the same page about things, you know, like the city has um, a lot of things have gotten worse um for in a lot of areas because of the council. And so we have to be able to address those issues and um be able to work together and listen to what the residents actually want, because they're the ones that are going to be voting for us to make these decisions.
You know, when you're running for office, it's always very easy to criticize the incumbents, right? So, Mark and Gail, if you're elected and if Carlos is elected, the two of you said that you disagree with him. So how will you all work together on the council? If you're all elected to resolve your differences?
I've thought about this um hundreds of of times, because people bring it to me, they say you can't get along with people. I don't get along just to get a uh, to go along to get along, and they come up with the most um silly uh resolutions till I have to teach them, like I did in my real estate office, when I had to teach people to uh to buy their house or to sell their house. You, it's a, it's a process. And I figure if I sat there and I taught them, and you're always going to have some bully um on on the council that's going to say, oh, oh, no, that won't work. Um, but then you take it to the people. I've already thought about it. And no, I'm not going to let anybody bully me when I know my stuff.
So your, your, your um response would be to teach your, the other council members?
And if they don't want to learn, shame on them.
Okay, Mark, what would be your, your uh your response when it comes to dealing with council members with whom you might disagree? How are you going to bridge your differences?
Well, I think every issue is different. I mean, for instance, Carlos Romero and I may disagree about OPA. We may disagree about development, um, but we did agree on the sanitary district, and we do agree on clean water in Palo Alto Park Water and the O'Connor thing. So I think there's um, there's issues that you're going to partner on, and there's issues you're going to have honest disagreements on. Um, I think I agree with Webster on a lot of issues. We may not agree on all issues, but I would hope that if I were to if an issue like, hey, should we have a new Parks and Rec Department come up? Um, or should we address parking that Webster and myself be able to come to an agreement on an issue like that. Um, one of the key, really key issues, if you're on council, is being able to count to three. You know, do you, do you have three votes to pass, pass something? And I'm, I'm, you know, I think a lot of the issues that I'm concerned about are common sense. They're supported by wide swaths of the community. And, you know, I frankly can't imagine, you know, if we were to be talking about getting a Parks and Rec Department where too many council members would be, no, we don't want to have our kids in organized, we don't want to have a Parks and Rec program, we don't want to be funding, you know, better facilities for our kids and for the adults that live in the community.
Well, you know, it's interesting. It's interesting that you and the other council members might agree on a Parks and Recreation Department, but the problem would be in the details. How do you bring it about? What will it include? So it will be those the minutia that you would have to work out. We currently have two uh members of the community on, Court Skinner and Elizabeth Jackson, and I'd like to give them an opportunity if, to ask questions, if they have any questions that they would like to ask. Court, Elizabeth?
Elizabeth's gone.
Can we unmute?
All right, I just pushed the wrong button.
Okay.
And I'm on my phone, so it's, it's, I don't know, it's, it's not very loud right now. Um, anyway, uh, I I would sort of like to have people stop worrying about uh things like um uh displacement and start worrying about things like, how do we build a city that is a real city for everybody that lives here? Uh, for some reason, we have, we seem to have a mindset that says, some people really don't belong in East Palo Alto, and they just go away and stop bothering the rest of us. And that's not healthy. If we're going to have a city that works, we've got to have a city for everybody. So I'd like to hear how they plan to create a city that works for everybody.
Okay, why don't we? Who would like to start?
Um, I can.
All right, Gail.
Um, I had three thousand five hundred clients in my tax business of real estate, and we all got along. And you have to listen. Um, I always had, uh, especially my thirty-four employees, they always tattled on one another. And you have to sit there and you have to listen. You have to listen. And uh if you listen hard enough, you can come to a a a solution, a compromise. Um, in a demo- uh democratic uh society, democracy is the key. Um, you have to, um, I end up teaching, you have to tell the other person why the other person feels the way that they feel. They have a right to feel the way they feel. So can you uh go along with that? And nine times out of ten, it worked. Um, if you can tell, show them the receipts, what I mean, the facts, people will um, will will get along and and go, we.
Okay, I I I have a question before the others of you uh answer Court's question. So Gail, you will teach, but the assumption is that those you're teaching don't understand.
That's right.
And they might very well resent what it is, the fact that you think that you should be teaching them.
Right.
So. How do you deal with that? Because the assumption is that you're right and they're wrong.
You have to show them the facts. You have to make it clear to them. I've had people who have come into my office, sat in front of me, and I tell them the four one one, it'll, oh, no, no, it can't be, you know, um, three weeks later, they'll go away. They'll even go to other real estate offices, and I know that because we were friends, and so they would tell me so-and-so was in here, and then they will come back to me because I told them the honest truth.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to give others an opportunity. Who else would like to respond to Court's question? How do you make East Palo Alto a place where everyone will feel that they belong?
Well, let me just say that, you know, Court, with all due respect, we've worked together on many things. I think the premise of the question is wrong. I think indeed the city of East Palo Alto does indeed try to respect all those folks that live here. But I do certainly believe in the concept of equity, and what equity means is not that everybody gets the same thing, but that those who indeed in society have been deprived and not given the same position in society as others should indeed receive a little more to bring us all to an equal basis. And certainly in the, in East Palo Alto, it's why we're called a just city. That is a priority for us. It is to make sure we don't leave people behind when other folks who indeed are benefiting from a good economy or who are able to, you know, get the funding because they don't have structurally racist financing uh of uh, you know, programs that don't allow people to get loans or, as with with blacks, certainly first fired, last hired. That doesn't help in terms of people actually being able to kind of, you know, um, get two feet on the ground. We need to address those issues front and center. And so part of what we do in East Palo Alto is yes, clean, to try to do the streets, make sure that we have, um, you know, appropriate uh appropriate policing. I disagree with Mr. Dynan. We actually do have programs, and I know Mr. Dynan has insulted some of our staff, particularly our black staff, saying that they are incompetent, and that that's why we need a a a um, 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 Park Parks District. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have to accommodate all folks in the city. There's something called the dialectic, where we discuss things, we then have our differences, we create a synthesis and move on. In the case of the city council, on an annual basis, all five of us get together. We help create those new priorities or push the existing priorities forward in a collective fashion. And that's how, whether Mr. Dynan gets on, or whether Gail Wilkinson gets on, or Rob Neil gets on, we wind up collectively discussing these issues and moving forward. Not bickering, not fighting, but agreeing on those areas that are indeed priority and moving forward.
Okay, Mark, um, in answer to Court's question, what would you say? How, what would you do to enable everyone who lives in East Palo Alto to feel that they belong?
Well, I I want to go back to something that Carlos tried to pass, which was OPA. And in that OPA, the Opportunity to Purchase Act, he tried to get it on on a Saturday and pass it on a Tuesday without giving the community any notification. It's the height of hypocrisy for someone like him to lecture us.
No, we're not going to, we're not going to pursue.
When he included in OPA, what he tried to pass on that Tuesday night, a provision to downwardly appraise black Latino homeowners.
We're trying not to attack.
I'm 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 stating fact here.
That's a misrepresentation, Mark. You led the entire process to.
You, you were on.
I I don't want to have you all muted. Now, Mark, can you talk about specifically what you would do in enabling everybody in the city to feel that they belong?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I was walking on.
He's modeling that behavior right now.
I I was walking on Buchanan Court this um, or Buchanan this uh weekend, and there was a about a twenty-two, twenty-three-year-old uh woman who was talking about how she was leaving East Palo Alto. Said there was nothing for her here. She grew up here and said, yeah, there's nothing to do. There's no, um, you know, I leave the city to do everything. Um, it's time to move on. E- East Palo Alto doesn't have anything for me, you know, you know, doesn't offer anything to me. And I thought that's really sad. You know, part of that is creating a community where there are opportunities for young people. There are things for people to do. There are jobs in the community. There are opportunities. Um, and it's also about, uh, you know, bringing uh these opportunities that are all around us in Silicon Valley into East Palo Alto. Um, you know, the idea, there's, this is a thriving community. We have very low unemployment. Um, people are making good money, whether it's in construction, there's union workers here, there's a lot of uh people, you know, running businesses, and you know, what would I do on council? Um, I think, you know, the first thing you would do is is, uh, you know, start pursuing the things that the people want in the city. You know, Webster talked, talked about some of them. Um, there's a, there's a group of issues that everybody's concerned about. It's housing, it's parking, it's parks, it's quality of life, it's fireworks going off in the middle of the night. So, um, you know, making everybody feel welcome. Yeah, that's a, that's definitely something that we need to prioritize, is the city have a quality of life that attracts. Um, you know, that we have, you know, older uh adults that have lived here for sixty years, who feel very uncomfortable with the noise and the parking and all the things that have happened in in EPA.
Thank you for your response, Mark. We have two other people on, uh, Niambi and Elizabeth Jackson. Uh, would either of you like to ask a question of the candidates?
Could I answer the question that was just asked, if that's okay, before we go?
Sure, so Rav Neil, sure.
Uh, uh, um, I was just going to say that, like, I feel, I I want to echo the what Carlos was saying, but apart from that, I want to emphasize how I feel like it's important for us to listen to our constituents and ensure that we are inviting people to come and speak. I feel like far too often, the politicians are making the decisions, they will make the decisions based off of what they feel is best. But I feel like it is important that we allow people to come and tell us their stories and tell us what they need so that we can work collaboratively. One way I really want to focus on this is establishing a youth commission so that we can have our youth come and work with the city council and offer us their suggestions. And I believe that this is a very important step that we could take, because not only would it allow us to gain their insight and give them a voice in our city council, but it would also allow them to learn about city council, the county, and how the different forms of government work, so that when they get to our age, they can be the next generational leaders, but also be more prepared and know how things work.
Okay, thank you. Niambi and Elizabeth. Would either of you have a question for the candidates?
Yes, I I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so if elected, once elected, what would be your top priority within the first week of taking seat in the council? Would you do for the community, for the city, citizens of East Palo Alto? And how would you work with your fellow council members to init- to get that initiative um to go forth?
Look, I'm going to say, we're a general law city, and I actually agree with Mark on this, that you have to be able to count to three. And that is important. So I think the first thing one does is you work with your fellow council members. So I think the first thing one does is you work with your fellow council members. To identify those particular issues that collectively you want to move forward. That's the counting to three. Generally, we want to try to count to five. Um, if you ask me, I think the programs that we're presently working on, the type of stuff that we've prioritized indeed are going to get us there. You know, we, we, we have the big issue with the sanitary district, which obviously Mark and I actually agree on that one. Right? That it's integration. Uh, we have the issue of our water companies, which we also think we need to kind of address. So I think you wind up working with council members in a way, not as a strong mayor, a strong council member. But as a council member who can work with other council members to then zero in on those major issues. That collectively the body wants to talk about. Again, we don't have a strong mayor or council member city.
Would anyone else like to respond?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of council meetings, I always felt like I was the sixth person, um, that was on the council. I have watched them and Carlos says, um, he agrees with Mark. But I have sat there and, and listened to council people yell at each other and say, I am not a child. Don't you tell me what to do. And it's always one council person that bullies people. And you could, it's nice to say those nice little things you said there, Carlos, but you know that's impossible.
Now, Gail, we're not getting personal, okay? What you're saying is what you would do to bring everybody together. Or what you would do the first week if elected? What would you do the first week if you're elected? And how would you work with your council members, other council members?
Grocery stores is always nice, but you got to get rid of that traffic and parking. And I'm sick of hearing about housing where we've already reached our, the goals and I don't know what they're proving. All you do is build more housing and more people and more traffic to come. So the first thing I would do is the traffic and the parking grocery store. I have, uh, here, uh, a door hanger where, um, I have eighteen themes on here. Uh, that I, I intend to do.
Uh, that's what you would work on your first week in office. Webster, your first week in office if elected. Is there anything that you would try to work on rather than, in addition to getting adjusted to the council?
Yeah, I mean, you know, just getting adjusted, um, I think that's important. But I think there's two issues that I could probably immediately probably start working on. If not within the first week, but within the first, you know, couple of months. Um, addressing the parking issue, um, that could be something that's easily, could have been solved a long time ago. And we talk about three council members, um, agreeing on things. Our council, our city has been riot ran effectively by three council members the past fifteen years. And they haven't done anything to address parking. It's gotten worse.
So what would you do? In, in your first week, if it's that simple, what would you do to solve it? I think you said it's simple to solve.
Palo Alto solved the issue over there by, uh, you know, the creek. When it comes to parking, they implemented a parking permit program. You can't park overnight over there, you know, unless you live there, you know? And so that caused a lot of that, that they addressed that in Palo Alto. How come we couldn't develop a sensible parking program? And the next thing, you know, and in addition to addressing this parking, that's a, you know, maybe a quality of life issue. But also economic development, providing entrepreneurs with like opportunities to get licensed and to do things the, you know, the right way. Setting up incubators, um, to make sure that, you know, that we. That, those are the things that are, two things I think I, I feel like I could, you know, work on initially is, you know, with a lot of the small business, economic development and, um, addressing parking.
Okay, Rob Neil, do you want to ask, answer that, respond to it? Or you don't have to, we can go on.
Uh, I would just like to add, like, the, the thing that I would like to focus first on is following up on Measure HH. As I mentioned before, that was the pilot program that's working on helping our residents gain certifications. Uh, a few weeks, a few months ago, I attended a city council meeting and they had given us the first set of data about how many people had enrolled. And how many people had completed the certification and what they were, um, planning to go towards. And they had also requested additional funding so that they could expand the program to include more residents. And the first thing I would do after I am, if I were to be elected, is I would go over to see what the second set of data is. I believe that the next report should be due around that time. And I would like to analyze that data and see how many people have completed the program. How many people were able to get jobs after that and how long did it take? And also going over the demographics to see if there's certain ethnicities that are not, are being left out. And how can we make sure that we are making this accessible to them? As well as ensuring that we're making sure that we're recruiting both male and females to ensure that we are making this accessible to all of our residents. And not just targeting specific ones. So I would really focus on that job component because I believe that alongside the affordable housing, ensuring that people can get these jobs will help. Um, help address the gentrification issue.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Could I, actually, I'd like to answer that question as well, I think.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, you can have a chance to respond later, Mark, okay? Elizabeth, yes, we can hear you. We could hear you. Can you hear us, Elizabeth? Well, Mark, go on.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of what I do the first week, it's a good question. Um, I think one of the, I've had a couple of meetings with Tomo, our finance director, about the hundred and forty-five million. That East Palo Alto currently has in the bank. I would definitely want to have more in-depth meetings to understand what our reserves are, where we can spend them. I have a rough approximation of that, but I'd like to get a lot more detail. Um, second thing is, um, you know, get together with the other council members. If Webster is elected, we can definitely talk about parking and getting a parking plan implemented. And, um, you know, talk about getting a parks and rec, uh, program, um. Implemented in East Palo Alto as well. And I think that would be a very popular, easy thing to do to get the city to spend more money on our parks. And, uh, start the Parks and Rec Department, which we do not have. So those are, uh, three, three things I think could be fairly achievable. And, uh, you know, now there's just the work of getting elected, see if that happens.
Okay, now, uh, since we're down to the wire, this is an opportunity for each of you to make a brief closing.
Hit it, Anna. I have a question, just Elizabeth.
Yes, Elizabeth, okay.
Yeah, I have a question for all of them, the candidates. Um, I'd like to know when you're going to include the community on major decisions that you cannot make a decision on. In the past, we've had two issues, OPA and the sanitary district. It took years, couple of years for you to come up with a, uh, the solution. And you didn't include the community. You needed to put both of those issues on the ballot and let us make our own decision. We've done that to become a city. We've done that for IKEA. We've done that for rent stabilization. And how many times rent stabilization have been on that ballot? We need to, for you, for whoever are going to be counsel, to look to include the community in your decisions. So I'd like to know what any of you think about that.
So are you all in favor of putting major issues like the one she mentioned on the ballot? Yes.
Look, I, I don't, I'm not going to answer that question specifically, but I, what I can say is that I think, and Mark's probably going to agree with me on this one. I think the community had two and a half years of vocal vigorous discussion on OPA, right? I mean, there were, I wouldn't say a thousand, but there were good, you know, close to seven or eight hundred people that actually spoke up. Probably a thousand, more than a thousand, if you looked at who went to these meetings, who submitted, uh, information, emails, et cetera, et cetera. That is part of the legislative process, and I think it worked, right? There was a, there was the dialectic, the discussion, the, the pro and the con, ultimately a synthesis. That, you know, I wanted to get to a, a compromise. I couldn't get the three votes. Boom, done. The other issue is of the sanitary district. I, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you on this one, Elizabeth. Because indeed, the community was informed on this. People went door to door on both sides, trying to get people to sign a petition or not sign a petition. There was plenty of information that, you know, probably was illegally sent out by the sanitary district. But nevertheless, went to every single household, not once, but twice, informing them of these issues. And then you all were able to collect a thousand signatures, I think, uh, fro- from folks. So clearly that was a public discussion. That is democracy working.
Any other comments?
Okay. Want to hear from me?
Sure.
Okay, which one you want me to talk about, OPA or sanitary district?
Well, uh, what I'd like for you to do is talk about whether you think issues, major issues. Should be on the ballot for the community to vote on.
The sanitary district.
Rather than getting into details about either one.
Not going to details, but definitely the sanitation department because they're gonna, their rates are going to be increased. And the citizens should have a voice in that. As OPA, as far as OPA is concerned, it missed this, uh, disinformation and misinformation on that. And, uh, the way it was set up with the, um, with the nonprofits behind it turned me off of OPA. So, uh, both of them, maybe OPA should have been on the ballot. But you had a lot of, um, uh, outsiders, uh, outside investors and homeowners and real estate, uh, um. Uh, people who had their little fingers in the pot. Definitely they should, it hit, both of them should have been on the ballot. Let the citizens, uh, decide.
Okay, now, uh, before Elizabeth's question, I was saying that we're getting down to the wire. So this would be an optimum time for you to make brief closing statements. In terms of why voters should vote for you for one of the three seats on the East Palo Alto City Council. So we can go in alphabetical order, Rob Neil, Sean Free?
Two minutes, three minutes, how, how long?
Uh, I would say for a minute.
Oh, wow.
Free, you've had a lot of chance to talk, so.
A lot I had to say.
It's like, you can say a lot in one minute, believe me.
Wow.
Can you get us going, Rob Neil?
Yeah, I was just, I was waiting for everyone else to stop talking. But, um, thank, thank you, everyone, for, uh, inviting me tonight to speak. And I just really want to ask for your support. As someone who was homegrown in East Palo Alto, I have seen the community change. And I personally resonate with the struggles that are affecting our communities. Um, I attended Ravenswood School, High School, I went to Karma. And I was able to pursue higher education and I really want to come back and give back to my community. And I want to be your guys' voice. But furthermore, I want to ensure that you guys have a seat at the table. If I am elected, I will work tirelessly to ensure that every resident of East Palo Alto has an opportunity to speak. A motto that I live by is, I believe, I firmly believe that at the end of the day, you and I don't need to agree. But we need to be able to have a civic and, um, a civic discussion and be able to come to a solution that works for both of us. And I really want to work for that and build that for our community.
Thank you. Excellent time. Mark, Dynan?
Thank you, Henrietta. Thanks for hosting. It's been a delightful conversation. Um, why, why should you vote for me? Uh, I'm a, I'm a parent. I'm raising my kid and my family in this community. Um, I'm a small business owner. I know how the business world works and I get things done. Um, if I'm elected, I'm going to be focusing on housing. We need to build a lot more housing to, to, you know, we have a short housing shortage. We need to build more housing. We need safe streets. It needs to be safe for kids to walk and bike to school. Parks, I, I, I fully support bringing back and funding a Parks and Rec Department. Parking, we need to implement common sense solutions to improve our out of control parking problems. Infrastructure, we need to invest in rebuilding our roads, sewer, sidewalks and water pipes. Animal services, we need to improve access to affordable spay and neuter services, microchipping and vaccinations to promote responsible pet ownership. And I support development that prioritizes the needs of East Palo Alto residents by bringing everyday services like grocery stores, restaurants, movie theaters, banks. Cafes, bars, automobile services and all of the other businesses we use on the base.
Thank you, Mark. That's it. Thank you. Uh, Carlos Romero?
Yes, I'll try to make it quite short. Look, I, I think if you want continuity with experience, proven vision and results. I mean, I am that candidate. Clearly, I have been working with the other two council members, with all five of our council members, because most of our, for, all four of the council members. Because most of our votes are indeed five, zero. Um, that, you know, what, the city will continue to have that experience, that expertise. That kind of integrity and community commitment that I bring to this position and that I've brought to this position for the last fourteen years. And that indeed I have these proven results, whether it's, you know, bridges that are being built, roads that are being repaved. Or, you know, if you look at Kula Landing, or for that matter, all of the work, and I can truly say all of the work that I did. On the pandemic, certainly trying to make sure that everybody got vaccinated, over seventy-five, uh, um, um. Clinics, uh, thousands and thousands of, uh, of, uh, uh, packets of material distributed, not to mention, uh, tests. So again, I think if you want that experience, proven vision and results, one would want to vote for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Webster Lincoln?
Yeah, um. You know, Carlos talks about continuity, but I think we need change. You know, we need improvements. We don't need the same of what we've gotten over the last fifteen years. You know, that Carlos Romero has been on council. Our city has effectively been ran by three people. And, um, I just think that we just need change, you know, we need improvements. We need, um, better opportunities for our local entrepreneurs. We need better opportunities for our youth. We need, um, better streets and better parking, you know, all those things need to be addressed. We need a grocery store that serves all residents in East Palo Alto. We need a lot more things. We need restaurants. We need, uh, downtown. We need that business district, you know, we need sewer upgrades. We need water infrastructure upgrades. I mean, I think the city has about eighty million dollars in upgrades that need to be done just to its own water system. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done and I'm just ready to, you know, get to the, get to work. So, you know, that's why I think people should vote for me.
Thank you. Gail Wilkinson?
Okay, um, okay, I got it all. Uh, she vote for me? Term limits. Term limits. I mean, forty-two years and some people have been here, uh, and, and on, on the council. I haven't been on the council. I've been out there raising my children and, uh. Not realizing there is three segments of East Palo Alto. We used to have a middle class. And they were government workers. I work with Sonnet, the postal service, uh, the, uh, at the VA hospital, uh, utilities, Palo Alto utilities. We had a middle class that was overlooked. I want to bring back the middle class. And, uh, ac- according to everything that I've, uh, written down here, I want to, uh, challenge the rent. I brought this to the city council about how you could lower the rents. Um, entertainment, I, uh, centers, pet store, uh, stores, a viable supermarket, not just a one note. Uh, uh, Johnny type, uh, of, uh, supermarket, supermarket for everybody. Uh, I want to do, I want to take care of the, I know how to do the parking and the, and the traffic. I have a solution for it. I went to the council. They blew me off.
Okay, Gail, I think that's it in terms of your minute. And I would like to thank all of you for sharing your views and saying why you think you should be elected. And now it's up to the voters to make up their minds. So thank you so much for joining me. It's been eye-opening and a pleasure having you.
Thank you, Henrietta.
Thank you. Until next time and all best wishes to each of you.